So we're ready, Mary?
Okay.
Yes, I'll set recording.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Ashburnham Planning Board to Order at 6:31 PM. Because this is a Zoom meeting, I'm going to do a roll call of our attendance. Larry Boudreau.
Yeah.
Lindsay Butler.
Yeah.
Stephen Coswell.
Yeah.
Richard Wright. Richard, are you still there?
That's good with you.
Thank you. Yeah, you broke up a little bit there, but I did hear you. And then, of course, we have Roger Hoyt here, who is an associate member of the board, and myself is here. I have to read the notifications here. For the formality of doing this, agenda is posted on the town website and includes items reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Order and exact times of agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, except for public hearings which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Documents submitted for review can be found under the Planning Board tab on the town website. This meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. If you are joining the meeting remotely, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. The only comments I had, the first agenda items, Chair and Vice Chairman comments. I have, I have none other than to say that we don't know what the future of these these Zoom meetings will be. Obviously, the caseload of COVID cases in in Ashburnham has spiked up significantly, which is the reason why the Select Board has decided to go with Zoom meetings for the month of January. We have another meeting two weeks from now that will also be a Zoom meeting, but meetings after that, I'm, will do not know how, how this thing will unfold. That's the only chairman comments I have. Does the Vice Chairman, Richard, do you have any comments? Richard? I think you're on mute. I'll take that as a no, Richard. We'll move on. The second agenda item is hearings and applications. The first one we have is an A and R for Dunn Road. Is the applicant present? Can, are you prepared to present?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Our engineer.
Our engineer, Patrick Wood.
Okay, Patrick Wood.
Hi guys, how you doing?
Good. Hi, Patrick. Would you, you have control of the screen and you can present your, your A and R?
All right. You want, you want me to take over?
Yes, you can. Yep. You can share your screen.
Coming through loud and clear? Can everybody see it?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, so this is just an A and R for a, it's parcel of land right off of Dunn Road, kind of near the intersection of Heather Dunn Road and Dunn Road. What we've done is we've parceled off four lots right now. We're using frontage all along Dunn Road. Which is a public road. There is a there is a, some utility lines in the back that we've shown and some little bit of wetlands on the land and a small utility easement that the DPW utilizes from time to time to access the overhead wires in the back, so. I think we've, I think we've met all the requirements for the zoning at this point and wanted to put the application together, put in front of the board. Your comments?
So the frontage of all the lots is along Dunn Road. Can you state for the committee, because it's difficult to read what the frontage on that road is for each of the four lots?
Sure. Starting with lot one, the front, the frontage is about four hundred and thirty-one feet. Lot two, frontage is two hundred and one. Lot three, two hundred and six-ish. Lot four is seven hundred and twenty-three.
Okay.
And these are measurements taken from corner of property to corner of property. As, as the zoning bylaw kind of defines it.
Okay.
So the actual frontage, if you were to add up, like for instance, L fifteen to L eighteen, it'd be greater than two hundred and five point nine five anyways.
Okay. And it appears to me that certainly all your square footages are well, well within the standards of the bylaw. I do see quite a bit of wetlands there, which I think will mean that any development of these sites or most of the development on these sites will require Conservation Commission review. You're aware of that?
We are.
Okay. All right. It's clearly not a subdivision, so we're good there. Do any of my colleagues have any questions? I'll just walk through them and ask them individually. Larry?
Yeah, if we sell off those individual lots, is there still gonna be an ease, ease way or right away for the electric company to get down to the lines?
It will be there. We, we've had discussions with utility company, because there's there's the opportunity to improve the existing easement as it is. Right now, you can see the existing easement kind of clips some of the wetlands. And we might be able to rearrange the first portion of this easement so that we can avoid any impacts to the wetlands and make it a shorter a shorter path to the back of the property anyways.
I'm just curious, because it goes through three lots. So if you sell those off to three different individuals, is there gonna be something in the land documentation stating that they're still gonna have an ease way for them to get back there? If that's the only way to get back to our lives, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we would probably even be able to reduce it to maybe two lots, but whatever the existing language is and the deeds could stand and it would just follow whatever deeds are created going forward.
Any other questions, Larry?
Oh, no.
Lindsay, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Richard, do you have any questions? Richie, Richard, I think you're, we're having trouble getting you still. Let's move on. Steve, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, and since Rogers, our associate member is here, Roger, do you have any questions?
I do. I'd just like to, to read the notes that make reference to access to dam. See note three. Could you explain that?
Let me read the note for us. The property shown here on is subject to access rights of interest and into the dam. Together with rights of passage required by the town of Ashburnham, see book six thirty-seven, page fifty-four, in book thirty-three, page one of the Mass Land Records. So I think we're just referencing that there is some access rights in there spelled out in a certain book and page.
And is that actively used?
I'll, I'll let Heather and Dawn speak to it because they know the property much better than I do.
Hold on, I make sure I'm Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah, the, the, we always refer to that as the dam road and the town does have the rights to use it to get down to maintain the dam. The only people who use it really are the guys who go to take the boards out and put them back in on the dam for the drawdown and the power company. And the, any potential owners will be well aware of that. That will be included in, in the, in the agreement for the, for any sales.
Well, it's also, it's listed in a recorded document.
It's already recorded, yeah.
Any other questions?
To be in order.
Okay, you have any other questions, Roger?
Uh, no.
Okay. I think we're set.
Damn behind. They have a dam for that land behind Chris's property.
Who's speaking, please? Who is speaking, please? On the, on the question on the dam, I, I couldn't, I did not know who was speaking just now.
Sounded like Ed.
Okay.
Did sound like Ed.
All right.
I don't know.
Okay. Anyway, I think we're fine. I'll entertain a motion for support of this A and R.
I'll second it.
So I guess I made the motion there and Larry seconded it.
Well, I make a motion to approve. Sorry.
And that's okay. Does anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. We're just gonna, bear with us, everybody on the call. We're just getting used to, again, doing Zoom meetings. So with, we have a, a motion and a second there. I need to take a roll call vote. Larry Boudreau.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Yes.
Richard Wright. Are you with us still, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, yes. And a yes for me as well. Motion passes. With regards to the A and R, because of the COVID situation and Town Hall and all of that, we probably won't have this signed until early next week, but all of the all the board members will make their way down there to try to sign that in the first couple of days of next week. Okay, and Monday and the holiday.
I have one comment, well.
Yes, go ahead.
This as a reminder, the timeframe for recording the approval. I, I see that you've, you know, you're advertising the, the lots for sale. And I see in other, in other times, people wait to record the A and R until they have a purchase and sale. And just be mindful of the timeframe and be sure to, if you need an extension, request that in the timeframe.
That's an excellent comment, because we did have one A and R where someone did that and they didn't record it. And then, when they finally had a sale on the property, it wasn't recorded and they missed the timeframe in order to do it and they had to come back and get it redone. So you want to be, be sure to record it within the timeframe that, that's required. I think it's quite generous, though, if I remember right.
Yes, yes.
Like six months, but.
Yeah. No extensions, since we're out of the state of emergency.
That's right. So you don't get the extensions that you need, so.
I'll be available on tomorrow, and I know Friday they're closed. And I'll be available on Monday's a holiday. So Tuesday, I'm leaving town, so I'm supposed to be early morning.
So you should probably assign the A and Rs that have to be signed tomorrow if you can. I know that I can't get there tomorrow.
Perfect.
Yeah. I can't get down there tomorrow, but, and, and I don't know about the others on the board, but I can't. So I think that closes this issue and you're all set. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to move on now to A and R for Holt Road, map forty-one, parcel thirty-three. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Who is speaking for the record?
Robert Fickell. And I'm representing the Marbles and the Marble Family Trust.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Do you want to take the screen and present the A and R, please?
Yeah, let me see if I can do this. So are you seeing it?
Yep, I see it. It's a little small, but walk us through it.
Okay, so right now, it's a, approximately a seven acre lot. It is being divided into two lots. One will be four acres and the other approximately three acres. Both lots will have the required frontage and square footage needed. You know, to, to build a structure on. It is also in chapter sixty-one B, and it will be taken out of chapter sixty-one B.
Okay, can you help us identify what the frontage is for each of the lots?
Okay, for lot two A, the frontage is approximately two hundred and forty feet. And just a second here. Actually, it's four hundred and forty feet. And then for the second part of the lot, that's two point seven acres, it's got two hundred and seventy-nine feet on Holt Road and two hundred and two feet on Old Ashby Road.
Okay, okay. Certainly looks to have the adequate frontage, looks to have adequate square footage. It's clearly not a subdivision. I, I don't have any further questions at this time. I do have some comments to add at the end, but I don't have any further questions. Let me ask the board. Larry, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Lindsay, do you have any questions?
I just, so the frontage is on Holt?
The frontage for lot two A is on Holt Road, yes.
Okay.
For lot two B is on Holt Road and Marble Road.
Okay, so how much of it again is on Holt?
And for lot two B?
Yes.
Just a second, let me grab that. Two hundred and seventy-nine feet on Holt Road and two hundred and two feet on Marble Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Lindsay?
No, that was all. Thank you.
Okay, Steve, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Richard, do you have any questions? Richard? I'll take that as a no.
I, I do have a question when you get to me.
Yeah, Roger, do you have a question?
On, well, you say for two A, the frontage and access is from Holt Road? Is that where the access to the property is?
Correct.
And on two B, where will the access be?
The access would be on Holt Road.
Okay. At some point, we'll, board will need to assign house numbers. If you have any idea where the driveways would be or, or the structures that's useful in determining the, the house number.
It's my understanding right now that lot two A is not going to be developed at any time in the near future. Lot two B will be sold, you know, for a building lot.
Yeah. All right.
Go ahead, Roger.
It's an odd thing that our A and R says to put the house numbers on there and then our house numbering by law says it has to, yes, determined by where the house is, so. At that point of permit time, I, I such should be assigning a house number. As long as the viable access is from Holt Road.
Yes, it is.
Then that's the frontage.
The comments I, I wanted to add to this is, we're mindful, obviously, Bob, that this is in chapter, coming out of chapter, which means that the town has an option to buy some portion of this or the property. And that that's still under consideration or it has not been decided upon by the Select Board that's coming up at a meeting later this month. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's number one that everybody wants to be mindful of. The second thing is, is that I did talk to Marshall Dennis, Conservation Commission, and the Parliaments have quite a bit of potential constraints to them. And I just want to, you, you may be aware of this already, but apparently the parcel is constrained by some state designated rare species habitats in there. And, you know, I just, I just wanted to warn you that, that there's gonna be some, you can anticipate some challenging development restrictions and you, you may want to be very that has, that's not in our purview. We're only judging whether the property can be subdivided, meets the square footage, meets the frontages and everything. Conservation and habitat issues are under someone else's purview, but you know, we wanted to be responsible and at least put that on the record that you need to be careful about that, because it's gonna be it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a, a, a challenging development.
Okay.
Okay, I am happy to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make him approve.
Okay, Steve has motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Larry or Lindsay can fight over the second. I, we have, I have a motion in the second. I'll now take a roll call vote. Larry Boudreau.
Yes.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell.
Affirmative.
Okay, Richard Wright. We're not, we're still not getting you, Richard. Your, your connection is pretty poor, so. But I'll give an affirmative vote and the motion passes. All right, thank you very much, Bob.
All right, thank you. Good luck. Thanks. Thank you to the board.
You're welcome. You can sign up your screen. All right, the next agenda item is Cushing Academy. We, this is more of a report. It's not necessarily something that the board votes on because the selection of the engineer that can do the site review for Cushing Academy is something that has to be sort of mutually determined by both the town and the, and Cushing. However, it's, I'm happy to report that we had four engineers have submitted proposals. I have given those to Brian from Whitman and Bingham. Is Brian with us tonight?
I am, this is if I could, I know Sean Donnelly from CSL is in the waiting room. I think it's host. You have to let him in.
Oh. I hope she left me with the ability to let them in.
We transferred to you the host.
I don't, I don't see where the waiting room is. I'll have to see where. Let's see. Waiting room view. Let me view. Okay, there I go. Admit, 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 admit. Okay, sorry about that. To those to those who just, I had just admitted, I'm sorry about that. I did not realize you were in the waiting room. So. So Brian, do you wanna you, you want to tell us what the story is, because you sent me an email this afternoon about potential changes in the plan?
Yep. Except the chairman emailed just so you weren't surprised when we came on. Basically said that like most construction project nominees, there are budget concerns. If this project is no different, we're kind of going through, so. How you engineering, I guess for lack of a better term, trying to keep the budget a little bit more in the line. And so with that in mind, we didn't want to slow the process down of choosing a big here in the engineer. However, we just didn't want to, as I put my email this morning, you know, cut them loose. Have them go looking at the stuff that has already been submitted, just in case things change. We may have to pay twice or have the guy have to do anything like that. So I think we're happy.
Well, there's
process from here, about choosing one, get somebody on board and you can get to the next meeting on the twenty-sixth. Hopefully we can give you the thumbs up on these plans or whatever.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Roger for his comment, because he has a little bit more experience than me, but I'm going to say as, my understanding is simply this, you know, we've had four proposals. The applicant is paying for it, so obviously money is one of the issues. We have to make sure the, the four proposals that come forth that I can, that the town administrators is willing to accept, you know, those that have come before us. I can buy some time with the applicant, with the people who've submitted proposals and just say, hey, there's some changes happening here. We would like to defer selection. You know, until we're absolutely clear about what the scope of the review will be. And you can see what the proposals are. We definitely need to have all of us take a careful look at each of the scopes outlined to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. You know, one person may be considering more in the scope than the others, which might be the slight difference in, in, in cost. They weren't particularly over the top or overly expensive anyway, in the scheme of things for a project like this, but, you know, ultimately it's just the selection process is, I understand it is simply the planning board, the town and the applicant being in agreement, mutual agreement about who the selection is. And, you know, if everything was in order and we had all of this figured out, we could be, you know, we could make an award tonight, but clearly we have a few loose ends, so we, we don't have to make an award tonight. So Roger, have I said that correctly? Do you have anything to add?
Oh, I think that the point is just to review the scope and make thing, make sure that what the board feels is important is included and you can omit things if they're line items that the board doesn't feel in need to have the applicant expend the money on. So yeah, once you, you review them and see that if you're not in a hurry, Brian, then, you know, that can be done before the next meeting. I'd say, well, the other thing is just to be cognizant of the timeframes for the site plan review. If the applicant mutually agrees that we can, you can extend the, the time for a decision. Partly till you're ready to go, but also the board has a chance to have the peer review.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just ask a question on you had mentioned that you have to check with, with code administrator, I guess.
Yeah, the only thing, the only reason why is Weson and Sampson and, as well as Ty and Bond. Those are firms that the town has worked with before. McCarty, as well as Graves. I'm not aware of the town having had them on as engineers before. So all, that's a very simple process, Brian. I, I can probably find out tomorrow from the TA if, if, if they or anybody in town has had any issues working with those firm and those, those before, which I doubt, which is why it, it's a, it's a minor thing, but we but that's where the town comes in. There could have been some past business thing that happened with the town that didn't go well and they would, you know, try to eliminate, but they, they've known who we've gone out to all along and I've had no objection to date. So I doubt that's gonna be an issue at all.
And I just remembered. It didn't actually happen because we went with the firms that were already, the town had arranged with, but for setting up the twenty-three G and processing payments and such, that just you know, it's, it's another step for the firm if we haven't, the town hasn't done business with them recently, but again, nothing that's overly complicated to do.
That was gonna be one of my questions for, for the sake of my project team, so we. We being the project team, we don't contract with these firms directly.
Yes. That's my understanding. Is that correct, Roger?
That's correct. You just, you just give the checks to the town to, to set up the, the account. As an escrow account and then the bills are charged against it and. If necessary, replenish it. As we go along.
I believe your last project had Weston and Sampson do it, because they, they sent that in the cover of their. Their letter. So yes, we, you paid the money, the Cushing paid the town the money and the money engaged Weston and Sampson to do the review.
So I guess where do we go from here?
From here, I want you to, I want you to look at those scopes. I, I mean, I would, I would be helpful if you could send me a brief email, looking at the scopes of the, the people who have submitted something. To us. If those scopes work to. Are acceptable to you, or have been well defined, or if there's any differences there. We, meaning the members of this board, will do the same in looking at those, those. You know, proposals. The money issue is not something that is of concern to us. We're just concerned about the rep, the reputation, reputation of the engineer. And if the scope is right and we agree with the scope. And we'll do the same. So all I would ask you to do is to do that. Give me your comments about the proposals, if you have a preference for the ones. I definitely have to ask you, we want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest there. In other words, is one of the engineer, your brother-in-law, that might be a problem, so. We, we need to know that and there needs to be full disclosure of that. But other than, other than that, we just need to know if, if you're, if, if, if you're comfortable with the scopes and you're comfortable with. Firms and if you say you don't care. You will deal with that too, you know. That's all, that's, that's all you have to do and I'll use that to confirm with the town if they have any issues with that. We don't have any issues with that and we're comfortable with the scope, then at the next meeting, we'll just confirm it. I'm not going to, just for the sake of a public meeting, because these are RFPs and proposals, we're not going to. You know, put the proposals in the, the exact proposals into the public record. Because they're all, they're in the public record, they belong to the town, but we're not gonna put them in this meeting. Or express what the, what the different rates are, proposals are in respect for the people who have submitted their, their proposals. But other than that, we can just come to the next meeting and we'll put this on the agenda and we'll agree to who's been selected.
Perfect. I think, I think it's great we got four, four reputable firms. We worked with all of my know, Weston Sampson.
Yeah, I, I, I was very happy with the, the, the response we got. And I, the town was very happy too, because we've had, not always had a full complement of engineers to choose from.
And I think you'll, you'll find, I think I mentioned it at one of the meetings, one of the responses, Cardi Engineering and Patrick.
Okay, that's good to know and I'll, yeah, that's good, no, thank you. Yep, that's all we need and timeline is gonna be really important here, so. I know that I, I've been through these projects with institutions before. And things do change and things do get delayed. You know, obviously, these proposals aren't gonna hold their rates forever. And we'll, we need to be respectful of that and to give them an honest assessment of what the, the timeline will be. In fact, some of their proposals might have been based. Clearly are, are probably, were based clearly on the assumption that we assumed this review would be happening sooner rather than later, so. Give, it'd be important in your email to give as best you can. A, a timeline as to when Cushing thinks they'll be moving along.
Hey, time, this is Sean Donnelly. I represent the owner.
Oh, yes, yeah. Hi, Sean, I remember you.
Yeah, the, the timeline is gonna be relatively quick and the scope changes of the building are gonna be relatively minor. I mean, we might be losing some program, like maybe one faculty apartment. Maybe a couple of beds here or there, but the footprint is changing just based upon some cost-saving measures that we're looking at. And that, we're so far. Down the road on that conversation that we should be able to make a decision here relatively quickly. I think we're gonna be in a much better spot two weeks from today.
Oh, that, that, that's perfect. And quite frankly, the kind of changes you're talking about doesn't change a site review proposal anyway.
No, from their point of view, they're gonna have to spend the same amount of man hours doing it anyway. It's not like we're doubling the size of the building.
No, 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 you're exactly right. That, that should be about the same. And, and some of those proposals are, I think, most of the, all of the proposals were an upset, set limit. Meaning it was just a, a number not to exceed based on the number of hours they go on, so. So I think, I think we're good there. Any other comments? Does any of the board members have any questions to ask or add? Hearing none, we can move on and close this issue. Thanks very much, Brian and Sean. Okay, moving on to the next item. Okay, we're into old business. We addressed the whole thing with Jennifer Bernie from MRPC prior to this meeting, so we don't need to talk about it here. I'll wait for Jennifer to send her email and her PowerPoint presentation she was gonna present, we'll pass that around. And. You know, we'll address her questions and we'll put it on the next agenda and we'll maybe talk about it a little bit more extensively then. The next thing is with regards to the discussion of private road acceptance and requirements. I believe I see Mr. Ben Grazzi on the line. And I assume everyone saw my email response to Mr. Ben, Ben Grazzi and Ms. Penny. Today, John, do you have anything you want to say or any questions?
Hi, yeah, thanks. I appreciate the time to the board. I just really am calling to ask if, it sounds like you. Sent an email out and maybe perhaps reflecting a message that I had sent earlier.
Oh, you haven't seen that email yet?
Did that come to me as well?
It came directly to you. It was to the email address that you had for. That, that you used to send the note to Heather.
Oh, okay, and there was a response. I apologize. I've been checking my email. I must have just missed it.
Hey, and while it came from my, my personal email account, so it hopefully it didn't go to your junk.
Okay, I'll check. I'll check to make sure. I was checking just before the meeting in case there was any response. I apologize. I have not seen that.
Oh, it, it's, it's rather extensive. As you'll see, and it, it basically outlines, you know, where, where we are. And what you can do to move forward. It also brings into account, I understand you had a meeting with Randy. Our. Our DPW director out on the site and, and came to a certain agreements about what was gonna be done. And I, in that email, I outline what, you know, what you need to do now. And then we can come back to the board. If, if you're ready in two weeks, you can come back to the board in two weeks and, and we can make a determination, but there has to be agreement that. We're gonna make the road passable and that for proper services to that property. And, and then we can make a determination that will accept whatever compromises are made. And that the road is acceptable to accept that law.
Okay, terrific. I, I, I will absolutely search for that email and that's precisely what I've been looking for is, is specifics. My understanding, without having seen the letter, I didn't have a, a visit with Randy at the road. It was a phone conversation and in that conversation, and in that conversation, he told me that he was going to deem the road passable as it exists today. That, that there would need to be future maintenance to a culvert, which he was actually mistaken. He, there's. The culvert wasn't undermined at all. There's a second culvert there that's functioning properly. We tried to highlight that by clearing some grass and leaves off of it and, and putting vertical boards at the ends of it, so. I will, I will read that letter or your email and make sure that I accomplish all of those tasks and. We've got the machinery up on the road now, just as an update to, to begin work on getting the cul-de-sac upgraded, let's say. To, to meet the turnaround requirement for, for the vehicles.
Oh, that, that's terrific. That's terrific. I mean, basically what Randy had said to us is that the DP, DP, in the DPW and fire. And fire department's opinion that you can travel the length of the road to get to thirty-one. We're gonna have to have an understanding of what the, you know, sort of the measurements of the roads and the things like that. That's what I say in my email, but. I have to have, you know, because if we're making any, if there's any deviation one from what's defined in our bylaws. And what's defined in our rules and regulations, we need to understand what that is before we give you a determination. Whether it's acceptable or not December, even, even if Randy or the fire chief says in a pinch, they can get. An apparatus down to that property. Two culverts, he, he says need to be repaired and he discussed the turnaround addition. You know, some way to be able to turn vehicles around at that location. And so you understand that, our, our whole. We, the way this has come down, we have to be convinced, and I gave you the quote in the letter. That the road has to be of sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of. Particular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land and for the installation of a municipal services to serve such land. And the buildings erected on it. And that's, that's all we care about. If it can meet those standards. And the standards that are outlined in our rules and regulations, then, then we can give you a determination. And in that determination, we'll be very specific about what needs to be maintained throughout, you know, from now forward.
Okay, so. So I'll, I'll read the email and I'll, and what, what I'm hearing is that you reference a rules and regulations document in that.
Yep, that's on the town website.
So this goes beyond the recommendation of the super then, so now there's.
We have to, if we're gonna, if, I, I will tell you that I care most about the super saying, the super and. You know, fire chief and fire and police chief confirming to me that they can get a vehicle down to that property. That's what I care, care most about. We, if, if there's, if there are compromises that we have to make to what, to the. To the. The standards that are put forth in our rules and regulations, we need to just know ahead, when we. Determination, what compromises are we allowing? If the road is, if the standards say the road has to be fifteen feet wide, but it's only fourteen feet wide. Then we need to be able to, you know, with the recommendation of the town. Of the town DPW chief and fire and police, we need to, and if they're agreeable to it. Then we as a board need to be comfortable that.
I understand. That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you very much for that.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Good luck to you, John.
All right, thank you.
Okay. You all saw the letter that I sent. Did you all get it? Larry, did you get it?
The one you sent to John?
Yeah.
You sent out today?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't receive it.
I didn't receive it.
It's, oh, did you look on the planning board? I sent it to the planning board users account, okay? I didn't, I didn't send it to the individuals users. It's on.
I didn't see it there, but just to say that there's a, the person that's, Ellen, that was admitted in. She had sent an email a few minutes ago trying to get into the meeting.
Oh, she's on, right.
Now she's on, yeah.
Yeah, she's on now, I think, yeah, okay. Up and, oh, I'm admitting, Richard. I didn't realize. Hey, Richard. I didn't realize Richard got bumped off somehow. Okay. So that answers that question. I just asked the board members to read carefully the, the, the email that I did send to John. John had sent an email to the planning board account yesterday and my email is simply a response to his email. Okay. I have nothing, the next item was a follow-up on Whitney Park preliminary subdivision. I have heard nothing from the applicant. In response to my letter sent last, early last month that summarizes that. Then there's a follow-up to the W District bylaw change. I have nothing to report there. We're still kind of in limbo on that one. Then, so now we're at member reports. I, I did want to ask since. Ellen, it was let in late. Ellen, do you have anything to say? Are you here for public comment? Because I see one person on the.
Yeah, hi, good evening. My name's Ellen Seiner and I'm here with my husband, Sam Evans, and we were here to listen to the first item. Which is the ANR for Dunn Road. So we'll make sure to review the minutes, but I don't know if you're able to give a quick summary of, of what was discussed. Since we weren't in the meeting at the time.
Well, that was a pretty straightforward ANR. You can, by the way, because this is a recorded meeting, you will be able to go back and listen to the recording. Once they post it on the website. So you will be able to listen what you missed on that, but in summary, I can say the ANR was a rather simple ANR. They divided, they had one big piece of property, hello, one big piece of property that was divided into four lots. And the lots all had the appropriate frontage that is consistent with the, with the town's bylaws. And had appropriate square footage and it's not a. It is not a subdivision. So because it's not those things, as an ANR, which is approval not required, is what an AR me, ANR means. They don't really require our approval, but we have to validate that it isn't a subdivision and that it meets the basic standards. Of this lot division. So we, the board voted to approve the subdivision. It is. We did make note that there's significant amount of wetlands on there and it appears to me that on some of the properties. The wetlands may make development difficult, difficult to put a house on just because of that. But other than that, it was not an ANR that really the, the planning board had an authority to object to.
Great, great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You're welcome, and I'm sorry that I, I didn't realize I was controlling the waiting room. So I apologize that for that. Have a good night. Thank you. Let's, so going back to where we were in the. Uh, thank you, uh, let's, uh, so going back to where we were in the agenda, I'm sorry, I had jumped over public comments. So um, I, I felt the liberty to back off and, and correct that mistake of mine. Uh, Roger, any updates from MRPC, MJTC or Capital Planning?
I think we, you know, just from Jennifer, the DLTA one, so we're. I missed a part of that, but moving forward with the land use, um, the board needs to, I guess, give some feedback on the zoning map. Corrections um to Jason to get moving on that. Um, I don't think there's any action on the uh. Other proposal for uh mapping the water and sewer lines, um. The other thing is the. MBTA communities, there was a webinar today, I think uh Jennifer attended, but Bill Johnson also attended. Um, it just sets a timeframe, there is an online form that the town needs to complete. By May second, uh, just to start the process of then. Uh, DA CD establishing that we're in compliance and we have to set a timeframe. And the zoning amendments need to be completed by the end of two thousand and twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um. There is, as Karen mentioned, thank I forwarded you the PowerPoint from her presentation last week. There should be funding available to do uh zoning, the technical assistance. And a couple of, a couple of ways to do that so that uh. Either through DLTA or there's other programs, maybe from the HCD, it's the next, the next issue of the uh guidelines. Procedures will come out shortly, I guess, but there is a review comment, peri- period for review comment that uh. This board or the town can provide comments about the, the MBTA community legislation. So if you wanna get that on the agenda for February or such, we can work on that. Assume the town wants to comply and be eligible for those three funding sources that uh. Are listed there. Uh, I attended the NJTC meeting this afternoon. Um, wasn't too much going, the, as far as the tip goes. Um, DOT will be evaluating the status of applications that are on the tip for the various years. In February, um, there's an opportunity, if the town or designers wanted to present the project. And give them an update status, just let the MRPC know to be on the agenda for the next meeting, but. Um. I guess it's more for the town, just to make sure that we're, are, what designers, Weston and Sampson are actively. In touch with DOT to make sure that project stays on track for. I think it's two thousand twenty-five, but we're at twenty-five percent, there are others that are. At a higher percentage. We just wanna make sure we stay in that calendar year and not get bumped back. Um, it didn't mention too much, as uh cost meds increase and the funding stays the same. I'm not sure how that will affect projects, but uh, I think that's. It capital planning met last week with Minister to discuss. Um, the school department's capital plans as they affect Ashburn Ham's interest. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, nothing on complete streets, I'm sure, Larry, so I, I won't embarrass you by asking you. Uh, Richard, nothing on economic development, I assume? He's having audio problems today, I think. Um, and uh, I have nothing to report on the marijuana review team, there's been no meeting because there's been no proposals to consider. Bylaw review committee was suspended until January, we have our next meeting next week on Thursday. Uh, so that's all I have for that. Uh, town notices and announcements, I, you should all on the planning. Board email have received the. Uh, that last Wednesday Heather sent to all of us, which was, I believe it was Wednesday, that uh. She put the planning board uh, uh, email into. Uh, I did not have an opportunity to summarize that, but essentially uh, there's from Gardner as usual. There's a, a variance was granted on two hundred and forty-seven High Street because of uh, there was a. Uh, needed a variance for um, a foundation that was improperly stalled, not within the right clearances. They uh, there's a um, city of Gardner, uh, a board of appeals meeting notice. For next uh, January eighteenth at six thirty, um, and uh. It's not clear what this appeals meeting notice is for. Uh. It always said notice because of an intent to sell a property that's in chapter sixty-one B. Um, then there is uh. Uh, the notice about, we talked about this earlier, that the whole road property sale. Uh, which we just did the A and R for, um, that uh, property sale is in sixty-one B. Which is uh, gives the, for it to come out of chapter. It has, the town has the right to purchase it. Uh, personally, according to Marshall. Uh, the Conservation Commission doesn't expect that they'll recommend that the town purchase it. That it shouldn't be, are you, uh, Larry, are you trying to talk? Oh, oh, okay, I, I saw your lips moving, but you're, I couldn't.
My wife just got home, I'm just talking over the computer.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, so anyway, we, uh, the town had to be notified of their intent to sell the property. And bring it out of chapter, uh, but there's a fee to that because there's some back taxes and things like that, that has to be paid to come out of chap. Chapter, but the town has an option to buy property that comes out of chapter. There is also, uh, let's see, that's. Oh, that's the, the, most of the other, rest of the notice is the uh purchase and sale agreement for the property. Uh, an extension agreement, so that's um. Yep, uh, so if you see anything, and then there was also included in that mail, uh, something that uh. You know, building uh, an activities report that uh is now being provided to most of the boards in town. Which is the building commissioners activity report, which basically gives all of the committees. Sort of a list of the things that are happening in town with regards to building permits being requested. So um, it's interesting reading there, I haven't looked at this months, but it is interesting reading to know. Uh, who's filed for building permits and where and uh, because I know I've driven down roads and seen something up. And said, I wonder if they have a building permit to do that. And now you can go to the report and you can see if they do have a building permit to do what they're doing. So um, it's uh, uh, it's an interesting document. Anyway, uh, that's in the mail, please uh, uh, take note of it if you're of interest and we are uh. And uh, we're there, so um, next is approval of minutes, I don't believe we received the minutes from December eighth yet, have we, Lindsay?
No, I apologize, I just needed that gentleman's name and now I have it, the Ben Grazzi.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll be sending them out with these ones.
That'd be, that's one more thing, Walt, while you're during the meeting. Um, let's talk about DLTA. Uh, we should be getting it any, I thought it was gonna be Monday, but the uh, the two thousand twenty-two round one. Package should be going out any day now with a deadline to submission in February first. Um, there'll be, probably be a second round as it was before. Um, for discussion, the meeting last week in our PC. There will only be one application approved per town this year, evidently, we've gotten too many. Uh, not saying that's by name, but um, so it'll be one per town, it'll be a second round in March. And most likely, as I said before, the priority would be given to MBTA communities for that zoning amendment. The system, so um, anticipate that we probably should be doing that in time for the March deadline.
Okay.
Cause it just does require, you know, blessing in a letter of support from the board of selection.
Okay.
I don't think we'd be ready to do that for February first anyway.
Okay, okay, thanks. Uh, anyone else have any uh notes, uh, comments? Our next meeting's January twenty-sixth, it will also be remote. And I don't know about the meeting after that, it's whether the meeting after that will be, we're no, remote or not, it depends on. What goes on with COVID and all of that, um, does, if anybody has any other questions before we entertain an emotion to adjourn.
I'm all set.
Everybody else, Lindsay's good, Richard?
I am good.
Steve, you're good?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn in second, roll call, vote, Larry Boudreaux.
Yes, sir.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Eve Goswell.
Yes.
And Richard Wright.
Yes.
Yes, and yes, for me, everyone have a, a wonderful couple of weeks.
Get over and sign those A and Rs, right?
Yeah, oh, yes, thank you, thanks, everybody, we're, please, get over to sign the A and Rs. Between now and a week from now, okay?
You know.
Thank you.
A good one.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.
Yeah, cool, bye.